Am I ready? Buddy, you okay? All right. I'm gonna call Loudoun County Commission Workshop to Order for May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five. First up is Public Comments. Tammy Gallagher, then into the podium.
Thank you. The subject I'm here to talk about is the salary and benefits. That's on the agenda. Um, my name's Tammy Gallagher, and I'm the Register D. And I'm here today to support my four employees concerning the proposed fifteen hundred dollar salary increase. I think that is an insult to my employees when the other figure for one particular county office was forty-five hundred salary increase. I feel that my four employees are the best of the best. Loyal, dedicated, and hard workers for the register's office, as well as the whole county. With over fifty combined years' experience in at least four employees, they deserve better. I have one employee that has twenty-two and a half years' time in my office alone, and she makes nineteen sixty-five an hour. That's say compared to a fast food restaurant that starts out at fifteen to sixteen an hour. Not saying any other job is not important, but I assure you, we strive to be the best. And I think the public deserves the best when we are recording documents that are the biggest investment most people will make in a lifetime. I would greatly appreciate your consideration to do the right thing and treat each employee fair with the salary increase. What you vote to give one, give it to everyone. Let's show that we appreciate all of our employees and the jobs they do so that they will want to stay and be a lifelong employee of the greatest county in the state of Tennessee. Thank you.
Jeffrey Mark.
Hey, Commissioners, always good to see you, everybody. Uh, I wanted to talk to you guys about item two G. That's the property on seven hundred Friendsville Road. I can hear it very well, because I've just got the road from there. I don't know exactly how many houses they're planning on putting there. The plans I've seen have shown quite a few. That road's not ready, you guys know that. Three twenty-one's not ready for that much traffic, you guys know that. Greenback School's probably ready for that many people, but I moved to Loudoun County because of what it is. I don't want to see it turn into Black County, or Knox County, or any other county. I love this county the way it is. And so I hope you guys and ladies will consider telling them one house per acre is good for our county. Thank you, thank you.
Crystal Todd.
Okay, I know I've spoke on this before. It's about the same property, seven hundred Friendsville Road. What I'm afraid of is if we let that go the way they want to do it, we're gonna turn into Lenore City with the way they have left so many apartments go and multifamily homes and all that annexing and everything. That intersection there at Friendsville Road and three twenty-one, it just is not set up. It would be a danger to have that. Plus, you have a school bus that has to turn around. There's just so much. I realize there are some duplexes in that area, but other than that, we're, we're just spaced out. I have no problem with them building houses there, but we don't have to be on top of each other. I'm all for the progress, but to crowd that corner with what they were asking last time, now I'm sure they might have changed it, but it needs the widening of the roads. That's just too skinny of a road. That's a tractor road. The trying to get out onto three twenty-one, that'd be a hazard. The school bus would have to try to get in and out because they don't do all of Friendsville Roads. So he'd have to cross over three twenty-one. It's, I'm just asking for the county not to turn into Lenore City, because if we open it up and let him do that there, then who's to say up the road where they're gonna sell that fifty acres? They're not gonna try to do it. Or down the road when they sell those acres, are they gonna do it? And then we're gonna be like Lenore City, apartments, apartments, people on top of each other. Thank you.
Chip Miller.
Chip Miller, Kenny Crissy, uh, wanted to come and, and talk about these fine individuals that I have the honor of working with, and a little bit about insurance and, and salary. As you guys know, there's, our insurance reel was up. We've got several options there, and I think if you look at the different options, you guys really need to do your homework. We've had plenty of discussions, and I want to thank the Budget Committee for opening up a question and answer. I think we've got coming up with employees, I think that will solve a lot of questions, and thank you. My wife has breast cancer, and we, we think we've fought that battle and, and won that battle, but she continues to be on medicine and her stuff. And I can tell you that if we had been on the option one United Healthcare, it would have been devastating to us. And I know several other people in the annexed building that it would have been devastating to. So, look at that long and hard. If you choose to go with United Healthcare, please allow us the option two also, because I think that will make it a lot, a lot easier pill to swallow, to be sarcastic. Also, regarding salaries, I know we've heard that there, there are several options out there, but we know that out of the Budget Committee has came a, an idea of fifteen hundred for all county employees, forty-five hundred for the Sheriff's Department. They absolutely, absolutely deserve the forty-five hundred, as do our county employees. And I think if you look at that, the county law department, the sheriff's office starts up here as they should, and, and we're here. But that's putting a disparity in, in our, in our pay. We're asking for pay parity, not on the equal level, we understand that. Even though we think we've put our life on the line many times during, during the property tax season. But, uh, we've not done the Kevlar desk yet, but we might be looking at that. But, uh, but we, we would ask that you consider that and that you would look at these fine folks. It's not fair to them to not be on an equal, equal footing as far as salary and benefits. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Mr. Chairman, one quick thing, and I hope I don't get in trouble for this, but under our regs, it's germane to the agenda. Insurance is on the agenda tonight, salary is not. Now, the Budget Committee, we've heard from these folks tonight, and that's fine, too. I just want, we, we do this at every meeting if somebody runs off to the side a little bit. So, insurance is on the agenda, salaries is not, and it's not gonna be discussed tonight, but just wanted to point that out, Mr. Chairman.
Blake Moore.
Salary is on.
Salary is on.
Four A.
Four A.
Four A.
All right. My name is Blake Moore, and as you've heard me say before, I'm a taxpaying citizen of Loudoun County. One of the items on the agenda tonight is budget update, and this rise. In two thousand and ten, as I think I've said here before, Nancy Pelosi famously said that we have to pass the bill to see what is in it. I bring this up because it's my understanding that the Budget Committee is currently trying to define a budget for this upcoming budget year. But quite honestly, I've not seen any detailed minutes regarding all of these discussions. There's some information out there, but nothing detailed to the point that I can see online. So, to avoid a Loudoun County version of Ms. Pelosi's pass it so you can see what's in it, I would just like to ask our chairman, Commissioner Cohen, who I believe is on the Budget Committee, where, when the public might find the detailed minutes of these budget discussions, and if there could be a town hall style meeting that could be a two-way dialogue similar to what you're going to have, I believe, with the employees Q and A.
June sixteenth will be the public hearing here.
Is that going to be a two-way dialogue, or is it just going to be a presentation by the commission?
We'll have some public comments, yes.
We don't usually.
We don't?
Presentation, no, we don't. I don't care if we do or we don't, but normally this is the Budget Committee's opportunity just to present the budget to the rest of the commission. It's not been to all the Budget Committee meetings. The public hearing is when?
June sixteenth.
June sixteenth. Budget, when we present to the full commission, it's basically, that's all we do that night. But we do have a public hearing for anybody to come and say whether they want to.
So, is that a Q and A, or just this type of dialogue?
I don't even know what Q and A means, Blake. If you want to know what the budget is doing, we were there every day.
Excuse me?
On every trip.
Excuse me?
We've been there for six weeks, three days a week.
Okay.
You could have been there and heard every one of them.
That's not what I'm asking, I'm saying that that room that you guys been in isn't big enough to house everybody who might have questions.
All those people right there weren't here tonight. They all shit.
My question is simple, the public at large, is there an opportunity for them to have a Q and A with Loudoun County Commission?
What's the date?
June sixteenth.
All right, thank you.
Last but not least, Mike Campbell.
Mike Campbell, Loudoun County Assessor of Property, appreciate the opportunity. I'll let you get very quick. I'm here regarding four A salary and benefits committee recommendations on insurance. This last week, we had a salary and benefits ad hoc committee meeting, and there are two issues that came to hand. Came before us, the different options for insurance. And basically, through that meeting, we had more questions than we had answers. And so I think there's been a revision to the proposal, and that leads us to more questions on what is being presented. I think the, the meeting at four o'clock, Mayor Bradshaw has agreed or proposed that we have a meeting with the insurance agent to discuss and try to hash out what the concerns are of the hundred and seventy employees, two hundred and ninety throughout the county. It's a considerable difference. And what came up in that discussion, I know we had four commissioners, but we got a panel of nine here tonight. Seventy-two cents per hour is what we're looking at for a COLA adjustment for the employees of the hundred and seventy. That's not including the Sheriff's Department. I feel like that I want to own the responsibility. I have not been to every budget meeting, nor was I involved in the discussion of a COLA or a B schedule. And so, um, I, that's why I'm here tonight to, to address that. And so there's a big gap between seventy-two cents an hour. Commissioner Whitfield asked during that meeting if we would come down and speak. I want to take this opportunity to thank you for that invite and to express our concern. When we're looking at maximum out-of-pocket with a UHC insurance plan, I've got big concerns for the employees. We've got employees that are making sixteen bucks an hour, and so you take a family that's, that's on the insurance plan with a maximum out-of-pocket of eight thousand dollars, it could be devastating. Now, there's a big gap between one percent of seventy thousand people in, in that program, but what happens if you get seven thousand five hundred dollars? And so it looks like, I must have got two minutes. So, my, my concern is that I want you all to hear our concerns for the employees. I am proud to be the Assessor of Property. I'm proud to work with these guys behind me, and I want to work with you guys, and I want you to understand our, our frustration that we're, I'm, I want to be offering jobs less hourly rate than Monroe County. I don't want to be little Monroe County, but I think Loudoun County is way ahead of Monroe County. We can do better, and we need to be more competitive. We are a leader in this state in the property assessment world, and I want to be competitive in our wages, and I want to take care of our people. And I appreciate the opportunity to let me present tonight, and I would consider, I look forward to hearing more about the insurance plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, before I turn it over to Jim Jenkins.
Mr. Chairman, I may just have a little bit of liberty. Just letting everybody know, the next salary benefits committee meeting is the twenty-second. We're having a, we're finding our budget meeting immediately followed by that. Chris has agreed, if you all send me a date where most everybody can get here between now and then, we will set the meeting up, and he will answer any questions you all may have. And so we're gonna work this out. We're gonna get it sorted out, work it out. So, those are two things for, I said, somebody send me some dates where y'all, y'all can meet with Chris. And like I said, we're gonna meet, the Budget Meeting will reconvene, but it's a new meeting, we're advertising it tomorrow, it wasn't even on the schedule. We have a special call immediately following the salary benefits committee on the twenty-second. So, I'll put those down.
Patty, what time is the salary benefits committee?
Salary benefits is at ten.
Ten, on the twenty-second.
And Budget Meeting will probably advertise it for eleven.
Okay.
Or maybe even immediately follow, depending on how, how long the salary benefits goes.
Or it'll be the county office building?
Yeah, county office building. Actually, we may do, the question and answer, we may do down here just for space.
Yeah.
And access to a TV. But we'd put the, uh, the program up on the TV, y'all can sit there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, before you go any farther with the workshop, I do need to add something to the agenda. I really think this probably ought to be the mayor, but we'll, he, he can do it, because I don't know much about it. Need to add on here, two new names for the library board, or for the libraries, or?
Library board.
Library board. So if you'd add that on there, I'll, I'll cover this when we get to that item, wherever you want to put it on the agenda.
It'll be right under interlocal agreement on your side.
All right.
Okay. Jim.
Thank you, Commissioners. Item A through G will all be a resolution meeting in the Zone Act of Loudoun County, Tennessee pursuant to Chapter seven thirteen dash seven dash number five of Tennessee Code Annotated. Item A will be to rezone from A two rural residential district, F one floodway district, to A three developing agricultural district, F one floodway district, Loudoun County Tax Map, zero one seven N group seeds parcels five, six, and seven. Located at seven fifty-eight North Wilkerson Road, Loudoun County, Tennessee, situated in the sixth legislative district.
I know it was approved by Planning Commission after receiving no calls regarding that reason. And it makes three lots into two.
It does.
Thank you.
B.
This will be to rezone from A two rural residential district, A three developing agricultural district, Loudoun County Tax Map zero eight four, parcel ninety-five, located at three 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 zero North Tribble only Road, Loudoun County, Tennessee, situated in the third legislative district.
Are they wanting to do that?
They're creating about one point three three acre lot off of water tract.
Okay. C.
Uh, this will be to rezone from A one agricultural forestry district to CFD Community Facilities District, Loudoun County Tax Map zero sixty-four, parcel thirty-six oh three, located at New Hope Road, Loudoun County, Tennessee, situated in the fourth legislative district. This was not recommended.
Now, this is a, a quarry, a rock quarry that someone's trying to put in, in, down in Philadelphia, in the fourth district. So, I will be adamantly asking that we deny this request.
Absolutely.
And the difference is, this one is in the county, the other one was in Greenback. It's under the Greenback city regulations, and we had a little input. This one's all Loudoun County.
D.
This will be to rezone from A two rural residential district to A three developing agricultural district, Loudoun County Tax Map fifty-six, parcel seven, and A located at one zero four zero one Wesley Highway, Loudoun County, Tennessee, situated in the fourth legislative district. It was recommended by the Planning Commission.
Yeah, that's right there on highway eleven by the, used to be the dog training facility, and they're just trying to really move some water lines here. I'll be good with that.
E.
This is to rezone from A two rural residential district to A three developing agricultural district, Loudoun County Tax Map zero five eight, parcel zero five four point zero zero, located at two zero seven four five Barnwell Road, Loudoun County, Tennessee, situated in the first legislative district, approximately one acre long. Just taking one acre off the larger tracks.
What I told, it was a family member to help take care of the big property owner, so they were just wanting to put a house there, so.
Yes, sir.
And Planning Commission approved it.
Yes, sir.
F.
This is to rezone from A one agricultural forestry district to A three developing agricultural district, Loudoun County Tax Map zero three nine, parcel one thirty-five, located at three eight six zero Prospect Church Road, Loudoun County, Tennessee, situated in the fourth legislative district.
That's two lots, correct?
It's gonna go to three lots. It's one lot into three, you got two one acre tracks and a two acre track.
Math works out on that, doesn't it?
This is to rezone from A one agricultural forestry district to R two multifamily residential district, Loudoun County Tax Map zero forty-four, parcels sixty-one twenty-eight, sixty-one twenty-nine, sixty-one thirty, located at seven hundred Friendsville Road, Loudoun County, Tennessee, situated in the third legislative district. This was tabled in previous meetings, they have since that time, uh, their access is now off of three twenty-one. With no access to Friendsville.
No, no access on Friendsville Road, the access will be on three twenty-one. But we'd tell the folks that live there that the next meet, the next meeting, the voting meeting we have, they did, we, we'd like to hear from them either for or against about this. But like I said, they did change the use of the Friendsville Road on that. And I don't, what is the house, it's twenty?
I think it's twenty-six lots.
Twenty-six lots on seventeen acres, yeah.
Yes.
But so, y'all kind of spread the word down there that they need to show up next meeting, okay?
What they're asking for also, Coach, is, is go to R two, which is our new zone.
Cluster.
You know, they're gonna, they say they're gonna ask for a cluster, is what their intent is. But with our new R two, with our new CFD, and Bob Bowman has made it very clear, if, if you decide to approve this, it's, it's for that developer and that development only. They can't get all these approvals, then turn around and try to sell it and do something different than what we were told they were gonna do.
And it's all single-family homes, no apartments, no.
That was what I proposed, yes, and they act to have a city water, city sewer connection.
Jim, that's it, you want more on June second's commission meeting?
Yes, sir, if you will.
So, anybody who wants to speak on any of these, June second here at six o'clock.
Thank you all, have a good.
Thank you, Jim. Commissioner Shaver.
All right, I'll do the easy one first, the library board. You got, what the email says is on Thursday, May one, the Loudoun County Library Board Trustees met. Two new board members were voted on to replace retiring positions. Board recommendations are Philadelphia trustee replacing Pauline B., Pauline B. with Cindy Crawford. Greenback trustee replacing Cindy B. with Teresa Terry Kidd. Let me just go ahead and give you this, between now and when we vote, you make sure that's all in. I don't, I don't know if your name's boss.
Whether or not I was gonna be here, I think, is why it went somewhere, but I think what came to you didn't.
From my June second's commission meeting, Dan?
Please, under your name, please.
Under your name.
Please.
Yeah. All right, the second item is, is Brian here? Brian Brown? Okay. Come on up with this one, because I don't, this is the first I've seen of it technically. We have two roads down on the edge of the fifth district, fifth and second district, Browder Hollow and Johnson Drive. And these two roads are split by the city and the county. So apparently, somebody's been doing a lot of work putting paperwork together, I don't know who, I don't know Bob Bowman, I don't know the city attorneys, I don't know who's done what. But this is an interlocal agreement and the resolution of interlocal cooperation agreement of Browder Hollow Road and Johnson Drive. Everybody got this in, in their stuff tonight?
It's in the packs, yes.
Oh, it was in the packs, okay. So, uh, I, I'm looking to see if I see price, a dollar amount, is there dollar amounts on it?
Yes, there was.
It's three hundred and six thousand dollars and change.
Well, that, that is the not to exceed ten percent over the estimated cost of two hundred and seventy-eight.
I'm just guessing it'll cost three hundred and six thousand dollars.
That would be our portion, three hundred and six thousand?
No.
No, it's gonna be split.
That is totaled to be split fifty percent each.
Okay.
I, I, I'll just, I'll just be upfront, my concern is how do you intend to collect the money from Lenore City?
I don't have that.
That's a problem.
Well, I mean, reading this, it shows they passed after the fact.
Right, yeah.
My wish would be they pass upfront.
I mean, I don't know about anybody else, but we know what they've done with nine one one, and Mike Campbell's here now. Last year, or last reappraisal, they refused to pay the reappraisal bill. I think we had to hold a check till they paid it. Did you ever get a formal agreement with the cities on reappraisal? No. So, I, 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 I'm not saying yay in there or what, I'm just saying most likely the county be on the hook for all of it, based on historical record here.
Well, it said upon completion of the research and project, it shows how we reimburse the county. I think it's that before it starts, will be paid their fifty percent.
Is it item four upon completion of the research and project, it's here, it reimburses county fifty percent of total cost of research and project. If that burden weren't to change, that's why the city is required to pay that half of the estimated cost, not up to that ten percent, but I guess we could do half of the estimated cost, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars upfront.
Half, half of the three hundred and six would be a hundred and fifty-three thousand ninety-two dollars and ninety-four cents.
So, if we ask for that upfront for the project, we're.
Correct.
Who's, who's overseeing it? Or is the county doing the project, or is the city doing the project?
It's the county.
The county is actually doing, because when the city does it, we always wind up on the hook. We, million dollars on Simpson Road, four hundred and fifty thousand on Harrison Road, I mean, we don't have a good track record here of working with other people. I know the mayor made a statement at his meeting, said it used to be you could do this with a handshake, and I thought, yeah, used to be you could.
That's why this is written.
Yeah. I, 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 I may not be as stickler as he is with it, I don't know what anybody else thinks about it, but you, you can't play Lucy and Charlie Brown with football every time and not expect.
I'd be more than happy to take any regular measures that you all have back to sort of attend to it. But I'd be able to take and talk to Bob, Bowman, Bob Owens, once we put this together, so.
I have like half of the three oh six upfront before the project starts.
Have, have you spoken with Lenore City about this in a local agreement? And they're agreeable to pay you fifty percent?
Correct.
They are, okay.
And LCUV's paying for some of the infrastructure, too, right?
That is correct.
They're giving you rise or ring rises for the manhole covers and something.
Manhole covers and valves and things of that nature, yes.
Oh, they're horrible.
Denver.
Would you not say that the sewer is probably the main problem with Browder Hollow? I mean, then they put it right down the middle, and it's just fell out and washed out.
Matter of fact, there have been some repairs done to that. I think Tim Patty told me that it was twenty-ten, it was right after the fact. I don't think there was good compaction, it was on, and they had to come back, of course, you could tell.
It fell out, and it fell out, and it fell out, yeah. Well, they're, it's, it's, they're bad, that's for sure. And I, I, I would love to think that it all be great and rosy, and I just, I just don't know, I don't, I don't know what to expect.
Well, it looks like the county's in charge of everything and just letting the city pay, yeah.
Let them, let them.
Yeah.
We're letting pay nine one one?
We pay nine one one on our phone bills, cell phone and home.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
We do, we pay the nine one one fees. So the county chooses the, um, whoever is gonna perform the job.
Well, Harrison currently has.
Harrison's gonna do it, okay.
Uh, this was what, too, I think was, isn't that in the package too?
Yes.
It's got the two hundred and seventy-seven thousand on it.
Okay.
You want me to add it to June second with changes, or?
I think Brian can check on the stuff and see what his feedback he gets.
I'll be happy to.
If there's just any kind of insurance, whenever you get the money. That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, June second, it'll be on the agenda. That's right. Matt Klein Schmidt.
Oh, gosh.
Good evening. Um, the salary and benefits committee has voted to recommend the UHC, United Healthcare Surest Choice Plan, and.
Option one or option two?
Option one. The difference on this, in the difference of our current insurance and this our insurance is there are no deductibles, and the out of pocket will go to four thousand per individual and eight thousand per family. And then co-pay, co-pays are the only thing that gets paid in this insurance program. It's a six percent increase over our current insurance plan with Cigna.
Does that have a dollar amount attached to it, six percent?
I've got the total annual, and it's three million nine hundred sixty-nine thousand eight hundred sixty dollars and sixteen cents.
Say again?
Three million nine hundred sixty-nine thousand eight hundred sixty dollars and sixteen cents.
I guess what I was looking for was how much dollar amount that increase was.
Two hundred and thirty.
Two hundred and thirty thousand.
One eighty-three sixty-four.
They have, with that, if we do the dental envision, which we will, we'll get a two and a half percent discount off, off that total increase. And they've also given us a second option, which is the same kind of plan, there's no deductibles, and there's just a out of pocket with the co-pays. And that max is fifteen hundred and three thousand, fifteen hundred per individual, three thousand per family. And that is a sixteen percent increase over our current insurance. And it also has the two and a half percent discount with the dental envision, if we include it, which we would.
Which ones did the employees endorse?
The salary and benefits committee recommended the surest choice option number one.
It, it's a mixed bag across the county, really.
How hard would it be?
Option two wasn't available.
I was gonna say, how hard would it be to, to offer both options and let the employee choose?
Uh, United Healthcare will allow us to offer both options.
And then, and then if the employee chooses option two, they can just, they can pay the difference? Is that how that usually works?
I don't know.
Is it might about, about be time for Chris Womper coming podium?
Well, that would be up to us, it wouldn't, Chris.
He can explain it though. He can explain.
It would be a policy. Eighty-two eighteen's the current split.
Come on.
But option two's the same as the Cigna renewal.
Yeah.
It, it's a dollar difference.
It, it's a sixteen percent increase, however, you get a two and a half percent, uh, so it'd be a fourteen percent increase. Yeah, yes, thirteen and a half percent increase.
I've just had overwhelming, uh, response to this, and everybody that's contacted me would rather say was what they have. I mean, if that's, if that's possible, that huge deductible, especially for a family, I mean, that, that's, that's a lot.
It's not a deductible, it is a max out of pocket.
I mean, out of pocket.
So Chris, the, I guess the million dollar question in there, if, if we went with a six percent increase through United Healthcare, could we use option two and let the employees choose to stay with Cigna and pay the twenty-one percent increase?
No.
You gotta have one or the other?
We, we would have to use.
Is that a question to me, Mr. Chairman? You'd have to use the same company products, you have to either use two Cigna products or two United Healthcare products.
Cigna has renewed their offer at seventeen percent increase over current, instead of the twenty-one percent?
I guess for me, I think Adam got pulled up here, what, what does it cost the county for each of the options? What's our new, what's our new out of pocket, like that deductible on out of pocket, what's our new out of pocket cost?
Okay, so if you went with the option one, which was recommended by the committee, understanding as we, we bid this, we formally bid this, and so, uh, we started out with a twenty-seven and a half percent increase from Cigna, it was now down to a seventeen percent, just because competition is forcing it that way. So, the difference would be the bottom line, if you look at twenty-five on any column, C, D, E, F, or G, line twenty-five would be the difference in the annual premium increase, that's the premium value itself. And line twenty-four is actually the monthly cost increase. So if you're asking me, six percent would be twenty, nineteen thousand and two thirty, uh, the UHC surest choice plan, and two would be sixteen percent, fifty thousand a month, or six oh four.
Okay, hold on. Option one, the increase to the county cost would be?
Two hundred and thirty thousand one eighty-three sixty-four.
Two thirty, one eighty-three. And that's number one. Number two.
Number two would be six oh four four fourteen oh eight.
Six oh four, four.
And if you stayed with Cigna plan, it would be six ninety-three one twenty-six.
With no discount?
No discount, no, you already have the dental vision with Cigna.
So, when you say option one?
You could take, uh, you could take two and a half, uh, two and a half percent off of that two thirty, if you guys are doing the math. And two and a half percent on any line of twenty-five. Uh, well, excuse me, I'll put cross for any, any, any UHC plan.
Well, option one is an additional cost of two thirty, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Ninety thousand a month.
Option two is an increase of six hundred and four thousand dollars.
Fifty thousand a month.
And then what was the next option? No, I mean, was that option three?
You said, no, there's only, if you stay with Cigna, which is, is.
That's a part I missed.
That's a possibility, that's six, uh, fifty-seven thousand a month, or six hundred ninety-three thousand.
Okay, that's if we stay with Cigna, that's the one I didn't get the note of.
His employees, are, are they responsible for their cost on insurance, or do we pick up most of it and they have to pay a portion of it, or are we a hundred percent pay for all of it?
Eighty-two percent, eighteen.
Eighty-two, eighteen.
Henry.
Real quick second. Interjection, you're putting some value in the ad hoc committee's recommendation. Turns out the person who made that motion did not have voting rights and was not allowed to be there. That comes from Herr employer Steve Erleson. So that's a null and void motion that was passed, okay?
Matt, well, give me the, the first, the first option you presented was the out of pocket, and, and, tell me that again.
Yeah, so the out of pocket will be, would be four thousand per individual and eight thousand per family.
That means before the insurance pays anything, they'll be out eight thousand dollars, they got a family pay?
No, no, you only pay co-pays, you only pay co-pays.
Let me understand this then.
And all the co-pays, either being to the doctor, PCP specialists, uh, they all go toward the out of pocket. There's no co-insurance, so you don't pay, and again, I'm just telling you the plan, I'm not trying to sell you one or the other.
Oh, I, I, I'm just trying to understand, I don't, I don't understand the difference between out of pocket.
You only pay a co-pay.
You only pay co-pays.
And the co-pays are different from the deductibles, because all of your primary care co-pays that you pay goes towards that co-pay portion of four thousand dollars individually.
And how much is that co-pay?
You have to pay up to four thousand, or eight thousand.
Those are range bands.
But you're not gonna be out eight thousand dollars.
You have ten, ten to sixty-five dollar.
So you hit, once you hit eight thousand dollars, you have no co-pays?
You have no cost at a hundred percent.
After you hit eight thousand dollars. You typically don't make it to that point. This, this is the same insurance that Lenore City just got, and every time we've ever got this, when the employees are the ones that get, and I'm sorry for the way it sounds, but get screwed, it sounds, seems like, because we have to pay. And sorry, that's no disrespect to you, Chris, I just don't feel that it's a good insurance to offer people that are coming to work and being faithful to us, and I appreciate what y'all do, so.
Well, I'm, I'm still lost, though, and I, I can only do my own experience, I, I don't have county insurance. But what she had, what, what Sarah had at Oak Ridge was five thousand out of pocket. Till you spent five thousand dollars, they didn't pay nothing, it was, HSA is what it was.
It's a deductible.
It's a, I mean, that, you didn't, till you hit your five thousand annual deductible, now she and I are both old, we hit it by about February, so it wasn't a problem.
That's not what this is.
So, yeah, that's what I'm not understanding exactly. You're not saying that before they get any insurance help, they have to spend eight thousand dollars, I, 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 I don't follow this, the, the deductible and the co-pay, I'm, I'm lost on this.
There's no deductible, there's no deductible.
Once you hit single and visual, once you pay four thousand dollars in co-pays, after that four thousand dollars, it's all free.
Most of the co-pays, I, my wife and I have had it in like fifteen dollars, it's fifty dollars, and all that. That's gonna add up to eight thousand dollars before we.
So it never affects you.
Yet, but, but it pays.
Yes, so.
Once you pay the co-pay, it pays whatever it's gonna pay, it's not like you have to pay eight thousand dollars out of your pocket.
In the salary and benefits meeting, they, they had a.
I understand that.
Portal you could go on, and you could type in a procedure or a doctor, and it would tell you how much you were gonna pay for that procedure.
So if you have a, what I'm thinking, if you have a procedure, and that procedure, a percentage of that is two grand, you have to pay two grand before you can have that procedure?
No, you pay your co-pay, so if you break your arm, and go to the ER, you're paying three hundred and seventy-five bucks, right?
No, op, option A, yes.
On option A, and that's all you're paying to go to the ER?
Yes.
Out of your pocket?
Three seventy-five.
Three hundred and seventy-five bucks.
If they charge you three thousand dollars for that broken arm, you're only out three.
Three seventy-five as your ER co-pay.
That's, that's our co-pay. And the co-pays go towards the out of pocket.
There's no, there's no bill after that. There's no bill after that, because of.
No, no, you don't.
They changed something to pass the case.
There's, there's no bill after that, so if you go to the, again, I'm, if you go to the hospital, you have a baby, the co-payment is, let's just say it's sixteen hundred dollars is the maximum co-pay that we were able to find. Uh, if you have a baby now, you, you make your fifteen hundred dollar deductible. But the sixteen hundred dollars covers everything, covers the anesthesia, covers the C-section, covers everything that was with it. So, there's a hundred dollars difference there, but there were many, many examples that were shown, or less, on the co-pay side.
Well, I saw somebody had, the county building the other day, had that little thing where it had like a map, and you go pick the, a particular doctor, if he's your doctor, and then you put in the procedure, and I saw it was a knee replacement, I forget how many thousands of dollars a knee replacement was, but I'm gonna say that the, the, the co-pay was like three hundred and seventy-five dollars or something like that for a fifteen thousand dollar knee, or some such thing as that.
That's correct.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's not at all how ours is, so that's why I couldn't get my mind around that.
Nor is, excuse me, Commissioner Teague, or how the cities is, they don't have this plan.
Okay.
City does have Cigna. No, the city has Blue Cross and Blue Shield, they're going to Cigna.
I thought they were going to UHC. That's what I was told.
No, they're going to Cigna, they have Blue Cross and Blue Shield.
So are, you saying they're going to, same thing we're considering?
Same thing you have now.
Same thing we have now.
Their deductibles are a lot higher, I think.
I guess here's an easy way for, for me, I won't say everybody else, for me, let's just do apples to apples. And I've got a broke leg, and a broke leg costs me three thousand dollars under the current insurance. How much am I out of pocket?
Fifteen hundred bucks.
Under the new insurance, how much would I be out of pocket?
You go through the ER, whatever, uh, a maximum three seventy-five to five hundred dollars.
How is that not better?
I'm just, I'm a messenger guy.
Guys, this is the first time I've heard this too, I, I was at actual meeting, I don't, I don't, most of us weren't.
So the hospital will not bill you nothing else on top of that three seventy-five, cause every time I've ever had to go to a hospital, cause something has happened to one of my children, when they break an arm or a leg or something else, they've always been charged extra money other beyond what we're supposed to be as a co-pay.
And that's absolutely correct. But you don't have a co-pay, and you have a co-pay, you don't have co-insurance. So they're billing, billing you twenty percent of the maximum bill until you meet the out of pocket.
And that's not what we're going to, okay, so it's apples to oranges here, then?
No, I mean, it, it, again, I agree with you, Commissioner, cause it, it, that is traditional insurance. So you will meet a, you'll have a co-insurance payment, but you don't have it here. It's just a hundred percent based on, uh, directing employees to the UHC doctors.
Well, let's go back to my broke leg. I spent fifteen hundred dollars under my current insurance. And now I'm assuming under the current insurance, I've met a deductible, can I say that? Not even under the current insurance?
Nope, not till you hit fifty, whichever plan you hit, not till you hit four thousand dollars total out of pocket, then it becomes a hundred percent. So you could go have four broken legs and still pay five hundred dollars each.
Okay.
And have two thousand out of pocket, and still have to meet another two thousand if you have a heart attack.
Okay, well, I've had, well, I've not actually had a heart attack, I had a lot of stuff there. Well, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm missing something, I just feel like I'm missing something, because I'm hearing these people don't like that, but what I'm hearing you say is my broke leg is cheaper under the new insurance than it was the old insurance.
And that all goes back to relatively how different this is, is run. In, in the same capacity, um, you have to, you have to understand, it's just co-pays a hundred percent and not deductible with eighty percent. That's the difference.
Apparently, there is another meeting coming, according to our mayor. And, and is it gonna happen before we, before we have our June third meeting?
I think it would be prudent to, yeah, it's slated, but now let me ask you this, if commissioner wants to come to it, and I think that'd be a great idea, I need to advertise it, though, not to submit deliberations.
If, if the commissioner just show up at a, a chance meeting like this, I mean, you could advertise all day, I'm gonna be fine. But it's not required under this sort of thing, we're just coming to listen, that's not, we're not coming to participate, we're just coming as a regular citizen or employee, but it doesn't matter if you want to advertise it.
We've got plenty of time, I'll advertise it.
Yeah.
We've advertised it, the salary and benefits for Monday, Tuesday.
No, I'm talking about when the, the question and answer session.
Oh.
When we get it.
One more question, drugs, uh, if they needed to get prescription medicine, is it, what's the rates on medicines? If they're having to go and get medicines, is it better or worse, or about the same?
It's ten thirty-five seventy, and your current one is fifteen forty seventy. Ten thirty-five seventy, fifteen forty seventy.
I checked just one of my medications, you know, after my open heart surgery. For one medic, medication now through Cigna, I paid fifty-five dollars a month, I checked it through this one, it took it down to twenty-five a month. Uh, that's just one medicine, that's all I took.
Now, you will see, if you check those Cigna website, you will see some drugs, especially injectables, some other medication that says, see your surest representative, which is not me. As far as the drugs. I would be, so, you would have to get a PA, okay, which is a, a, to just go get it approved, right?
Do we have that now?
We have that now.
Okay.
But all these, these people who are a lot of my friends, uh, they've already got their PAs done with Cigna, okay?
I see.
And in some other cases, they would have to go back and get a PAs. I will tell you about the PAs, they have laxed those tremendously, um, since a tragic accident, it's not an accident, a crime happened to their, to, uh.
United Healthcare.
Yeah, over a PA. So, and it's, it's industry wide, that's not this United, uh, but it, there are still plenty of opportunities to have to get a PA, plenty. Uh, but that's no different than any other carrier.
We do that now, but you said it all the way out.
Now, I, I don't know how much more would be with, with the surest plan, United Healthcare surest plan, but I think it would be easier because of what happened. And that's what I've been told, I'm relaying information, I don't know it for fact.
So are we good explaining to Van, like, if, on this new part, the three seventy-five, going to the ER? You're still gonna get a bill, is that what it, are the, right now, we have, what, a two hundred and fifty dollar deductible for the?
No, you have a two hundred and fifty dollar copay for ER. So if you went to ER now, you would pay two fifty.
Yes, but.
And if your bill was five thousand, you would pay the remainder of your deductible, okay? And then the out of pocket would be anywhere, well, your out of pocket's the same, so it's a hundred percent.
Yeah.
Right.
Does that make sense to you?
That's our current insurance.
With the new insurance?
With the new insurance, you would pay three seventy-five.
But you would have.
Hell, co-insurance.
And nothing else?
But you could go.
That would cover everything. CT scans, blood transfusion, anything you need, three seventy-five, and you're out of.
Well, that's through the ER, okay, so if you get admitted, okay, um, you're gonna have to do some copays.
Yeah.
But you're doing it on both plans, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, I guess I'm missing, from what I heard earlier at our meeting, and, and a little bit of what I heard tonight, I wasn't at your salary and benefits committee meeting, but I, I'm missing how this isn't better.
But you're out of pocket, it's twice as much as what we have now.
But you won't ever get there, it doesn't sound to me like.
So you keep paying and paying and paying, eight thousand dollars when you could pay it in three thousand?
Well, but you may never get to eight thousand dollars, if I'm understanding it right.
So therefore, you keep paying.
Eight thousand's a family man, four thousand's an individual.
If you meet it, if you meet it at three thousand, you're done, that's yours. So you don't have to keep paying up to eight thousand.
The, the copay?
Yes.
Just the copay, but you don't have to.
The out of, out of pocket.
Copay or out of pocket?
Does copay go to out of pocket?
Copay goes toward it, all copays go toward it.
Medicine is well.
Even work stuff.
So you'll have to pay up to eight thousand dollars for a family before you, that kicks in and you get coverage?
But no, that's not what he's saying. You don't have to be out, out eight thousand dollars.
You're not eight thou, eight thousand dollars. If you have a hundred thousand dollar heart operation, and the copay for the MC, Jellis, and those guys are, is two thousand dollars, that's it. You don't have anything else.
But you would under the current.
Well, currently, you're, you would be capped at fifteen hundred dollars, cause that's your out of pocket. So yes, it would be more in that, in that case. Um, every time you get closer to the four thousand, it becomes a little bit more for the employees and, and their families.
How many, how many, I'll bet nobody don't have this right in front of them. How many, uh, employees do we have on insurance?
Two hundred forty-eight.
We have two hundred forty-eight, is that singles, families, the whole process?
We have ninety-seven individuals, seventy employees and dependents, and eighty-one families.
Okay.
I had it.
You had it, you did good.
But it, so if we go, if we go to the surest option two.
Yes, sir.
And they have to pay their eighteen percent.
Well, okay, so if really, if you look at, that's, I'm interjecting in the county's business here, but you six and sixteen, so it's a ten percent difference. If you utilize the two and a half percent, it's still a ten percent difference, it's three and a half and three, thirteen point five.
I'm just curious why, why the employees' eighteen percent piece is gonna go up?
With Cigna?
No, if we, if, for option two versus option one.
Another question for me.
I think I have that, hang on, I'm looking. But now, we're talking about two UHC plans.
The two, yes.
Option one and option two.
Correct.
You want to know the difference for the employee.
If, if we pick option one, how much more are they be paying per month for insurance, or annually? And then option two, how much is a individual gonna be paying for?
Individual, employee, plus one or family.
Just individual.
So currently, it's not.
So what does it cost the county?
Or what does it cost you all?
Hold on, let's get my, hold on.
An individual, a month?
So currently, an individual pays sixty dollars and forty-six cents.
Ish.
Per check.
How much?
Individual.
Individual.
It's a hundred and twenty bucks a month.
Yes, is that what you wanna know?
If we move, if we, correct, if we move to this option two, which they like the lower OPB.
Listen, listen, so on Cigna that we have currently.
We don't care about Cigna.
No, we do.
We're asking about UHC.
You wanna hear how much it's gonna go up? So currently on Cigna, they pay a hundred and twenty-one dollars per month on their checks for individual coverage.
Okay.
And if we go with option one, it goes to a hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty-nine cents per month.
Okay.
On option two, it goes to a hundred and forty dollars and thirty cents per month. If they pay the increased cost for option two.
The twelve percent?
Twelve dollars. Twelve dollars.
And, and you're saying, if we go with, uh, UnitedHealth, and you have these two options, then you could offer options to individuals, if they wanted to pay the differences? Is that what I understood earlier?
So what it's called, it's called a dual, the county would have to say, I wanna offer a dual option within one of the carriers, which in this case is UHC surest, and we would offer a dual option, so we would take, the employees would have the opportunity to sign for either one that they wanted to do, based on their personal needs and personal desires. And their personal, they know their personal health more than anybody does. So they would have the opportunity to choose, which would leave the deductible on option two, uh, excuse me, the copays on option two at fifteen hundred dollars, as it is now with Cigna. And three thousand for the family, as it is now with Cigna. It's still a big thing. It's a surest plan, but it would still be paid on copays. So now, if they, um, if they had a, maybe, the copays are actually dropped. They, they dropped them way down, because you have, it's economies of scale. So copays are different if you choose plan B, because, um, you, you gotta get to that fifteen hundred upwards. Now they're trying to get to four thousand. I don't wish anybody with a four thousand dollar out of pocket, um, because you're sick. You know, that's, that's not what people wanna do. But if you have a million dollar bill, four thousand's not too bad. Um, but on the same token, it's sixteen dollars an hour, what I hear behind me, and that's, that would be tough.
Well, y'all are gonna meet, and, and this many, or probably more, I guess, will be there. And, and I think, I'll be honest with you, I think there's been a lot of miscommunication, probably since the first meeting, to trying to explain it a little clearer, cause I, I'll be honest, I've sat here and listened to all this, I can't say I'm still a hundred percent totally understanding what it is, but it's just, it's a, it's a foreign place to me. But I, I think what we're looking for is the best, the best cost for the taxpayers, the best cost for the employees, and give them the best coverage that we, that we can afford to do, and that they can afford to do.
I'm under the direction of you guys. Whatever you guys aggressively vote on the second, tell me to do, that's what's my job. I mean, Rosemary's in Rose State, if you get an offer, you have to present. And that was my job, to present it to you guys, to make the best, most informed decision. So we, we can do what you ask, and we'll have it set up where, in here if it is, where people wanna ask a lot of questions, and we can go right to the.
I think that'd be fantastic.
Find the right, find the copayments and everything that's happening.
I think that'd be a great idea.
Chris, you do a great job, every year for us, we appreciate you.
Well, this is a lot better than, guys, we started at twenty-seven and a half percent, it was a million bucks.
Yeah.
It was rushed.
Yeah, so no matter what, we're gonna have to go up six forty or six ninety-three?
No, two thirty or six oh four.
Two thirty or six oh four.
The surest one or the surest two? Unless we decide to stick with Cigna for the six ninety-three.
Probably not.
Guys, you could, you just direct me on which way you wanna.
Be it to, be it whenever that meeting is, that'd be the request I'd have.
Are you still under the gun for June second? Cause you had a timeline, he's shaking, it's like, it'll be on the agenda June second.
Well, we can get stuff, we can have a lot of stuff, I'll be boys if we're down then, yes, sir.
Okay.
So is the recommendation gonna be UnitedHealthcare, or we're, that's still out for debate?
Well, we're gonna have another meeting.
They're, they're having another meeting.
Okay.
I would leave that open right now.
Okay, I think I would, too.
Go after the twenty-seventh.
I'll leave that.
I hope we can get a field, on the, by the time twenty-seventh's over, then we should be able to get a field.
We have lots of options on the table.
Yeah.
So.
There's not a one-size-fits-all anymore.
Any more questions for me? Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Chris.
And, and I'll say that, you know, this, in the past ten years, it's kinda been, plans have been similar. This is a new way of doing things, I don't know at all. Uh, like I said, this is a decision that I'm gonna help the employees with, I don't think county insurance needs it. So, you know, this is a new way of doing business, we'll see what works, and we'll take you up, right?
I mean, you know, and that's like, the ER thing. I have great insurance with the city of Loudoun. But if I go to the ER, it's six hundred bucks, no question of that.
What's your insurance with Loudoun?
Blue Cross, Blue Cross, Blue Shield. But it's six hundred bucks to go to the ER, so.
And, and I wanna say, it's not out of term, we voted Blue Cross Blue Shield, and they were at twenty-one percent increase over last year.
Twenty-three.
Uh, twenty-three? Yeah, I stand corrected, they were twenty-three percent. So we have everybody, we quoted everybody that sent in a bid proposal. The nice thing about it is, when they sent a proposal, we were able to negotiate some better pricing after that, a little bit, so.
Do you think the forced, the fact that we were forced to be helped, hurt, made any difference?
I think that was the law.
But it has been since two thousand and ten. I just didn't know if, if you thought it might have helped us some, or hurt us, or it didn't make any difference, I, it don't matter, I'm just curious.
Um, the way you did it, it probably hurt a little bit, but it, it's working its way back around.
Good deal.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, twenty-seventh will be the meeting, buddy.
And I'll give Chris one day this week, and figure out a date, we can come down, and everybody can ask, ask any question we'll ask.
All right, item B is a, um, the registered D's large format printer release, this is a current printer they have, and, uh, the renewal is two oh five per month for thirty-six months. And it's slightly less than what it currently is, I think, two oh nine per month.
Vote on it June second, got it?
And then, uh, Philadelphia had a copy machine go down, so we've already replaced it, but the total cost is one forty-nine, sixteen per month, for sixty months.
From the library?
What was that?
Uh, this is for a Philadelphia school, sorry.
What was that price?
Um, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars and sixteen cents, and it's for sixty months.
June second? They'll all be there. Gary Woodfield, Commissioner.
Uh, I've got the, uh, EDA, uh, letter to, uh, asking for us to rescind our letter to the EDA. I had this on a couple of months ago, uh, took it off, and I'm gonna add that back on for a June, uh, vote. Um, I got some more information from Bob. Uh, you guys know my concern about our, uh, our grants. If we, if there's an opportunity that we could, uh, lose those grants, so, uh, I'm gonna ask that we rescind that letter.
And you want that on June second?
Yes, sir.
Gary, will you send the letters from Bob to everybody?
I will.
Okay. You in yours?
Yes, sir.
Aaron, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, in the budget committee, these are the recommendations. Uh, consideration of request to pay one-time bonus for Loudoun County ag employees from their current contract funding. So currently, we are under contract with UT and TSU for the ag department. And they, they had some open positions, so there was some funds left over in those salaries within that contract, and they wanted to pay a one-time bonus to their employees. The budget committee recommended that. And the next item was a, a grant that was being considered for approval and acceptance with no match. It's the Homeland Security Grant for twenty twenty-five. Um, and then we had amendments in the county general fund. And mostly, this was estimates on the revenue for the current year, we tried to do this towards year end. And so we've done revenue on this meeting, we'll try to do expenses on the next meeting. And then we also did insurance estimates. So overall, the amendments are gonna be an increase to the fund balance of two million, three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars. In the public libraries fund, one fifteen. It's, uh, insurance adjustments, uh, which I think were a reduction. And then there were adjustments within the individual sub-funds to match up the revenues and the expenses with actuals. So overall, they have an increase to their fund balance of nine thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars. In the convenience center, it's the same thing, it's revenues and insurance estimates. So overall, the amendments will increase the fund balance two hundred and fifty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars. In drug fund, one twenty-two, there was a line adjustment for ten thousand dollars from one, one line to another, which is no bearing on the fund balance. In the highway fund, one thirty-one, um, the, there was a recognition of a reimbursement for TMA on a past disaster. Um, and then insurance adjustments. So overall, this was an increase to the fund balance of three hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars. In general purpose school fund, one forty-one, the budget committee recommended the adjustments approved by the board of ed. And overall, that was a decrease to the fund balance of, of fifty, fifty thousand dollars, sorry about that. And that school federal projects fund, one forty-two, same thing, but none of the amendments had any bearing on the fund balance. In school central cafeteria fund, one forty-three, same thing, the approvals by the board of ed, the budget committee has recommended, which is a decrease to the fund balance for a total of forty thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. In education debt service fund, one fifty-six, there is a recognition of the tax increase that happened at the beginning of the year, and also an increase in trustees commission. So these items increase the fund balance by a total of five million, four hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars. And in general capital projects fund, one seventy-one. The two amendments that were recommended are for the courthouse. Three thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars of the, the amendments is an increase in the, the cost of the bulletproof van, panels for the judge's bench, and eleven thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars was architect fees on phase one for owner alternates, okay? So it's a total decrease to the fund balance by fifteen thousand, seven hundred and six dollars. In education capital projects fund, one seventy-seven, these are amendments that were approved by the board of ed, they just matched up actuals also, which was a decrease to the fund balance for a total of thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars. And then came, okay, so these items were recommended by Capital Projects.
Whoa.
And approved by budget committee, I'm gonna go through those first, okay? So there, at the senior center and the VA, there were computers for a combined total of five hun, five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars and ninety-five cents. At the annex.
How'd that vote go?
That one passed unanimously, it was computers.
I know, I know.
Oh, my gosh.
I knew the answer, I wasn't asking questions.
Okay, at the annex, um, restroom renovation is twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighteen cents. That one passed.
No, no, no new toilets, no new urinals.
Cheaper than the insurance.
Oh, my gosh. Okay, at the annex, it's painting for twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars, that one passed.
Upstairs only, yeah.
Really, guys?
Yeah, it is really.
Somebody better decide if the stairwell's up or down, or does it just get half the stairwell? You know, you gotta get those things worked out.
But we were told that painting of the bathrooms was included in the remodel.
Renovation. When, when I said remodel, I was chastised.
Whatever it was, you're not getting nothing but two new dividers and a little paint for twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, are y'all ready to move on? Okay. A trade-in truck for the highway department, twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars. And then a dump truck at the highway department, this is a portion of the, the dump truck, the highway department's gonna offset the rest of the cost. A quarter, two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars. And then another trade-in truck at the highway department for twenty thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents. So all of those things were recommended by Capital Projects and by Budget Committee. This one item was recommended by Capital Projects, but failed in Budget Committee, okay? And it was a trade-in truck for maintenance for twenty thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars. And that's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Let's go home.
I'll consider this meeting adjourned.